Yep, go ahead.
We will go ahead and call the meeting door. Thank you everyone for coming. First item on our agenda is reviewing and approving the minutes from the last meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if you'd be kind enough to provide them to Linda, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
I'll second with the change that I've shared with you already.
Would you indulge me, sir, over that change?
Under the public, local public hearing, my section, it said per the con rams of plan, the zoning was appropriate, which reads that the request that he was asking for was appropriate. I asked her to add current zoning to clarify.
Thank you. So we have the motion. We have a second to correction. Is there any more discussion to be had? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have approved the minutes. Discussion on a possible setback variance.
State your name and address.
Derek Davidson, 411 First Avenue, Southwest, Casson. Looking to possibly get a variance on a piece of property I'm looking at purchasing. Right now, as you guys can see, kind of the house is on the GSI line, but I think it's offset a couple of feet. So basically, we want to, this house caught on fire last winter and we're looking to tear it down and rebuild a new house. Basically, using the existing hole that would be there once we demo that house out and then attaching a garage on that coming off of Second Street there. We kind of looked it up and did some math, quick math, and I think we have enough for a green space with the size of the house that we want to put on there. And basically, looking for like probably a four and a half foot variance so we can kind of keep it right there where it is. And then, it's pretty much the footprint that I have is exactly what the house is now. It's like twenty-eight by thirty-four, I believe, so the only extra we'd have to do is the garage. So I'm just kind of seeing if we, if you guys would approve that. If so, then I would just apply for a variance. We, or Linda, I should say, looked to see if that detached garage there had a variance because that was built, I was thinking about two thousand eight by the past residents of that place. And that one's sitting really close. It's pretty much in line with that house. Without having it surveyed, I wouldn't know exactly how far off the line it is, but it'd be something that we're probably looking at doing just to make sure.
Couldn't find a variance on the garage, but I just went back and found the building permit and it was an oh-seven, so it's oh-seven sixty-eight, but I haven't gone and pulled the building permit for the garage to see what they did there.
So I think it's on the, I guess the south side of the garage. I'm sure that setback's fine, but it's on the east side that, you know, is running pretty uniformly with that house, so. And being the part of town, I'm sure that the setbacks and everything were different back then when they built them, so. But I would keep that same, keep the current six and a half feet to the west. I guess it would be to that house. I wouldn't, with the, where the new garage would go. It wouldn't be any closer. It'd just be the east side. That would be looking for the variance.
Was there fire damage to the garage?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, not to the garage, no. Just to the house.
So the current house sits two feet off of the existing property line?
So we're kind of thinking, like I said, nothing's been surveyed, so we wouldn't know exactly, but the condition of me buying this place is if this, this piece of property is, is if I can get that variance or if we got to shrink it up. I mean, when we're looking at the group, my concern at first is the green space, obviously, because it is a kind of weird shaped lot. And I think that, that gravel driveway coming off of First Avenue is kind of saving that. If it was all cement, then I think we'd be kind of stuck there, but I believe we're going to be, have a thousand square feet or so buffer there with our green space, so.
And then your proposed west setback would be six foot six?
Yes.
And that's on the property line, not the other house?
Correct, which is probably right on, right on the property line, the way it looks anyway. If you, that fence, that she, you can barely see a black line running north and south there and there's a chain link fence there. The current owner's, I met him there and he kind of stated that when he was staking it all or whatever to see because he was running into this issue too and then just decided to go buy a different house. He was thinking the property line was actually running right up next to her cement stoop that she has there and that's, I want to say that the chain link fence is probably four feet off of that. So he was actually thinking that that fence is on his property, but wasn't for sure, so. We've kind of got to look at, look at that and see where that is. That's why the, the survey, I think, is going to be critical to see exactly where everything sits and before we move forward with the actual plans of the house. He's kind of, he's kind of waiting on me to dip over this meeting, so, to move forward, so.
So our current zoning is a minimum six foot?
Six and a half.
Minimum six and a half feet? And is there a combination between the two sides or not?
No.
Okay.
Each side is six and a half.
So you're just asking me to put the house back kind of in the exact same spot and then go to the maximum setback on the other side, minimum setbacks on the other side?
Yep.
You're aware that you'll have to fire rate that whole wall because you're within five feet of the property line?
Yep.
Which also means no windows?
Yeah, there's, any of those very minimal, maybe, maybe one, I think.
Are you sure the building code would take no windows with that?
Right, and that, I think that was, actually, no, there isn't any on the, the second floor either, so there won't be any windows on that side. I was thinking there was one in the upstairs bedroom, but there isn't because the stairwells on that side, so.
You know, there's five criteria we're supposed to look at when we're entertaining a variance. And I've got them here in front of me. I always like to go through them. I personally find them a bit subjective, but I still would like to solicit everybody's thoughts on these things before we go through the whole process of asking this gentleman to fill out a paperwork for a variance. First criteria, exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applied to the property in question as to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district.
Well, it's an existing house, so you're just trying to follow the existing footprint, which is different than other places, you know?
Second item, the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district and in the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not in itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Third item is the authorization of the variance will not be detrimental to adjacent property, will not materially impair the intent and purpose of this chapter or the public interest. Fourth is the condition or situation of a specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not of some general or current nature as to make reasonably practical formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situations. And the last is the literal interpretation of the provisions of this chapter would cause undue hardship to the property owner. Economic conditions, loan shopping, undue hardship. That is the process. I just feel like I want to say, hey, those items are the process. I'll look at those questions and make sure everybody. Those are the criteria that we need to meet to issue a variance. We're supposed to meet.
Have you looked at options of, you know, sliding the homeowner and making it deeper and tying into the existing garage?
No. I've looked at options to make it smaller. Basically, the, I'd probably try to pull some of it out of the garage on that side and the west side, but right now, my garage is proposed at, kind of the rough sketch is like twenty, twenty-five foot wide, so it's not over resized, you know? I'm not trying to stick a three stall in there. Just enough to get a truck in there and then there.
And past situations like this from your veterans?
Not to my recollection, but my recollection is not definitive of anything.
We have had them before and in this area, it's an older core area where there's a lot of buildings that are closer to the property line. We did just grant a variance for a brand-new house up in Casson Meadows with no foundation down yet to a tight property line. And this one actually has the foundation there, which is trying to reuse. But this is an older core area where there is a lot of that.
Are you using the existing foundation or?
That was an option, but it's, it's going to be one of those, I, I walked through it just to quick, you know, get an eye on it, but I really have another inspection like, to see if it's something that.
Building code?
Well, building code and just, because this is going to be my personal residence, so. Something that I'm going to live in for quite a while, so I don't want to start off on the wrong foot or in stone. But that was, that was the initial thought was, you know, try to reuse it if we can. But it's starting to lean where it's just like, you know, I, I'm in construction, so I, I'm tearing around, tearing basements apart a lot in the stone right now. If I'm going to have a basement, I'm going to make sure that thing's dry. I would feel probably a lot better and sleep better at night if I knew that my foundation was new and up to my standards.
So could the, the two car garage that's shown here could be added on to it as it stands now? Because that, that side yard is not the question, assuming that the lot coverage calculations pay that?
I think it's issue of the houses are totally not, which is just turned down and rebuilt.
So, yeah, because the, the two foot side yard that's there now, that would be considered like a legal law conforming use. It was an existence prior to whenever the zoning code was adopted. So the idea is that, you know, the buildings get, have more than fifty percent destruction to them than, and you'd be brought up to meet the current code. So that's kind of the circumstance.
Yep, yep. And that, you know, we talked about that too, because at first, you know, I've dealt with them in Rochester where, you know, we've done fire rehabs and the insurance companies are like, yeah, you can, you know, it was less than eighty percent, but when we started getting into it, it's, yeah, we had one wall standing and then everything else came out of that and we framed everything else now. So, you know, initially, that was my thought, well, it's already not conforming. Okay, if we use the foundation, that's still in place, we can, you know, build on top of it and then add on to what we want and then all the, everything to the west would be conforming. But, you know, I was kind of thinking it's just like, well, if I'm tearing it down that far, let's go all the way and if we get the variance, we get the variance. If not, then, okay, then we got to kind of step back and kind of assess, you know, our needs and if this is going to be a good lot for us, if not, then, you know, we might just pass on it and find something else, but, you know, I, I worked with this gentleman that owns it now and he was going to have me rebuild him a house and he kind of went through, maybe not all the way to this, this far, but, you know, so I kind of knew that, what was going on beforehand. So, yeah, it's kind of a, it's a perfect lot for me where I can use a secondary shop as my, for my hobbies and my woodworking and stuff that I do, you know, on a personal level and sell in my garage and attach the house and stuff like that, so.
Any other thoughts to share? I guess in spirit, I have no problem going through the variance process, which includes a public hearing. And I guess for me, understanding what the thoughts and the opinions of your neighbors are are just as important part of this process as anything else. Until they actually come in here and share those thoughts, I can, you know, I'm not, I understand what you're trying to do. I have no, no fundamental issue with it, but if we've had a line of your neighbors, potential neighbors out the door saying that they want nothing to do with this, then it definitely has an impact on my opinion and my ability to.
Oh, yeah, I agree a hundred percent with you on that.
I'm a big fan of the process and going through the process, so. And then I guess I don't see a reason as of yet not to go through the process. We've also got two city council members on here as well. I'm hoping I can persuade them to chime in with their thoughts. Ultimately, we're recommending body to the city council. So it's the city council that has to sign off on it.
Linda referred to the earlier one that we had on the news, but I believe that variance was to the rear setback and not to the side. So I think to try to compare that variance to this one is not the same. I do have some concerns about a two foot, but I've, I've pulled up Google Maps and I'm looking at it and how it looks from the front yard. And it looks like, as you said, it's already existing, so we're not adding insult to injury. So I also would be willing to entertain the variance process.
I guess the way I look at it, if you were going to reuse the foundation that's there and that east wall was going to stay on that foundation, I don't think I'd have any problem with it at all because you're reusing what's there. If you end up having to take it out, then I don't know because there's a lot of different ways you could go. You could shrink it up. But if, if you could use that wall and you were going to use that existing wall, moving anything that's there right now, I guess I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Now, you pulled up the ordinance. What does being in the older quarters to see if there's any leeway for any added things that there really is? There really isn't. No.
This is, you know, situation two is willing to become of it. If nothing's done with it, this is a way to, to utilize this, keeping it a home there. You know, if somebody's willing to, to do that, that is important to me. As long as, like Monty said too, plus nothing has changed on that, I would be okay with that. There's only so many possible things you could do anyway. I guess I would check and see, you know, take a close look at that foundation for each, and all that too.
Yeah, and it was tough because it's, it's limestone and then, and a brick. So exterior right now is spray foamed from grade up and then the inside, when you get down in there, has got brick coming up. So there's a couple, hopper style windows, I suppose you could call them, or glass block windows in there where kind of the brick is, you know, kind of cut away and stuff. And so really, I don't even know, until he gets all of his personal possessions out of there, which are, you know, really old and everything right now, so. You know, until that's out of there and, you know, or we excavate around the foundation or something like that, it's hard to say, to say what that's in, you know? And you get a, you know, a couple of people in there that are, you know, foundation experts, but to find someone that's an expert in limestone foundations is going to be, I'm going to be calling them my grandpa's buddies. So.
I just want to check with the building official.
Have you talked to your east neighbor about it?
I don't even, no, I don't know who those people are, you know, and then planned on it. I mean, planning, kind of talking to everybody around there to see, you know, what's going on and.
If they had no issue and they could come in here during the public forum, that would play a lot. But that's, you're going to be your closest neighbor. You're going to be right on the line with them. And if they have no issue with it, it's going to say a lot.
Yeah, then, then I guess that would probably be the only person that, because I think behind them is like a group home or something like that and that's, you know, from where, what it sounds like right now, that the owner, you know, talks with them all the time and has a pretty good rapport with them. And then the, little neighborhood to the west, we don't really have any issue. It's not like, I don't know if she's got windows looking out that, or just look at the side of your yard, but I guess anything's going to be look better than looking at a house that's had burn too with turps all over it, so, you know, for a year. And we're not, it's not like we're trying to stick a split little house right in the middle of, you know, only development. It's going to, I'm going to try to make the exterior look like it belongs in the neighborhood, so.
The house to the east looks like it's in there somewhere.
I noticed that.
Picture window facing, you know, this is Second Street.
Is that a, oh, yeah, there is a little ramp there in there. Well, second, it was a two-story, so that one's right off Main and Main.
That's what I was like, so there's, it's one to the east.
Is there any windows on the south, on the east, east side or west side of that house?
It's a mountain, I'll see if I can pull up here. Yeah, there is. One, it looks like three of them. Did you see it? Yep. One, two, three, facing the west.
So if that, that distance from the side of that existing house, let's say, if I have that thirteen feet or whatever between the, if we did the variance at four and a half or whatever, so it's two foot off the property line, but then they have, what would make up the other? Would that still have to be fireproof then?
From your, from your house to the property line, that's all that. That's all that's active in the building.
Oh, it is? Okay. So it's not that thirteen foot, like that they're asking for?
It's tough, you know, new construction, when you run along new, that opportunities to give it the fit. So I agree that if you're using the old foundation, that's one thing, but new construction may be something totally different.
But the way we kind of read it, Linda and I, is if it's, what is it, complete demolition or fifty percent or something like that is what you said in there that it wouldn't matter even if we were using the foundation. That's kind of how we read it.
Right. So, did you read the non-conforming use?
As you were mentioned, the original.
So if we didn't do four and a half foot, would there be any room for any kind of variance if I wanted to, say, shrink it up, the plan? So it's only like two foot? So I'd have, you know, four foot? Or would I want to go all the way to six and a half foot? You know what I mean?
Six and a half would be a variance.
Correct. But would it be, would I be able to apply for, or would, would it be better if I just said, okay, we're going to shrink the house down two foot off, you know, do a foot off each side and then shift it over? Then I want to need, I'd be asking for two foot as opposed to a four and a half? Or two and a half foot instead of four and a half foot?
My opinion, variance is a variance.
Right.
So, you know, it's the total, boil down to principle.
How many square foot per floor, the way it is right now?
The existing house?
No, the way you're.
The way I'm looking at it, it's going to be right on nine hundred on the main floor, nine eighty-eight. So closer to a thousand and then the upstairs is going to go over the garage and everything. So you'd have about eighteen hundred, I think, upstairs. Just because I don't want any living space downstairs in the basement in case it doesn't go well. Don't care what the kids, the press on that.
I guess the way I still look at it, if you were sure you were going to use that east wall of the basement, I, I would go for it if I were you, but without knowing that and if you had to take it all down for new construction, boy, I'd really stick with that six-six. That's just my view.
Just revisit the plan.
You've got six other views here too.
Well, and the variance is a variance. We can't necessarily tie it to a rebuild or some new construction.
I know that, okay, I know.
Yeah, as it sits now, I mean, unless someone says, I'm a hundred and ten percent guarantee that foundation's going to be good.
Yep.
I'm not going to just use one wall just to, just to pull a variance.
Not at all.
That's not the way I roll. I'm going to do it all new or else. Can get a variance. If I can do this footprint, if not, then I'll just revisit the plan and try to figure out, you know, where I can shave some, some width on there. You know, if I got to go back a little further. Like I said, I think we have the, the green space and we got plenty of buffer in there, so if I got to go narrower and then just go deeper to get it, then, you know, so be it. But, you know, I don't, I don't want to lose that space in that garage because, I mean, we built plenty of houses with just bare minimum garages and I got a full-size truck and she's got a minivan. There's, I want to be able to park inside for once in my life.
Don't blame you.
And I don't think that two foot, where it shut off the property on there, it shouldn't say out of character for the neighborhood. You can see, I mean, you can look at the neighboring property, the back of that house. There's the rear, it's close to, so I think you're going to find that in other lots in the neighborhood where the structure, whether it's the principal structure or the outbuilding, is close to the property line.
Yeah. So when I drove around and looked, you know, I grew up in Casson, so I've been around there I've lived my whole life and, yeah, there are tight little alleys between every, every house or, you know, lawn to lawn, it's just one path, maybe two.
My house, which is a few blocks away, is two strokes, I mean, two runs of lawn more between us and my neighbors, so it is.
Yep, can you grab your leg?
No.
No, no, my ass.
No, no, my ass.
Well, hopefully we're able to point you in the right direction. Do you have any questions for us? Can we go with the process?
No, I mean, if it's something that, I mean, we just feel, we just got to do the process, then, all right, let's go for it, if not, then, you know, I'll just, uh.
We, we can't tell you that you can't apply for a variance.
Right.
I mean, you can go for it and bring all your ammo and have at.
Right. Yeah.
Guess it's how much time do you want to put into it, or are you actually sure yourself, narrow it up, lengthen it out, go for it?
Right. Yeah. Oh, I'm going to have a, I'll probably have a talk with that neighbor and see, you know, what her feelings are on it, and, you know, and a couple on that, on that block, and radius of two would be enough. I mean, I'm sure it has to go kind of a radius around the house, but you're not on the block, it probably doesn't really concern you, but, so, you know, fill them out, see what they say, and kind of go over the same stuff we just went over and see what they think, and if not, we'll revisit it, and there isn't a whole lot of space left here for, you know, a yard, but.
Good luck.
All right, thanks guys.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, discussion on possible conditional use permit for home brewery.
Evening.
The, uh.
Grant to sales.
And the, uh, the teacher and you may do a PowerPoint, so.
Us?
Home, my dear.
All right, my name's Scott Stroh, I'm at six oh one Third Avenue Northwest, and the, the short version of what I'm looking for is I'm trying to feel out the general opinion and likelihood of success here of getting a conditional use permit to put a small brewery in the, in the backyard, basically using an outbuilding as a brewery. Not a, not for home consumption, but, but for a, a commercial endeavor to be able to sell to restaurants, uh, liquor stores, things like that. My understanding of the process with the city here is that before I can look into the building aspect of it, I need to look into the continual, uh, the conditional use permit aspect of it, so. Like I said, what I'm looking to do, it, it, for the state would be classified as a microbrewery, uh, which is under, I believe, two hundred and fifty thousand barrels, a barrel is thirty-one gallons. But what I would be looking to do is about a, one, a little over a barrel and a half, about fifty gallons a batch, which is enough for me to, uh, functionally have a start-up and a break into the market. The reason why I want to do it there and do it in this way is it gives me an opportunity to, to start up this business and establish feasibility without having as much of a both financial and personal overhead into it. This is a way I can, I can start the business and still be around to tuck my kid in. As opposed to work, uh, because I, I do operating this while still, still working my teaching job, I, I teach high school physics in Rochester. So the, uh, business itself, so there are essentially three phases, three ways that a brewery can sell their product. If you've been to any of the breweries in Rochester, uh, they all focus heavily on the, on an off sale, so you can buy a pint there, and you can buy a growler to take home with you. The third option, which they have not focused on, which is what I would like to focus on, is distribution. So brewing the, the beer there, to then distribute to, like I said, restaurants, liquor stores, things like that. Given that the, uh, the neighborhood, uh, we're at, uh, nor, uh, intersection of Sixth and Third Northwest, about two blocks off the pool, I'm not asking for, for any sort of, I'm not asking you to let me run a bar in the neighborhood, that's not what I want to do, and I, and I don't think it would fit. As far as the sales of growers and things like that, I would like to entertain the idea of minimally, minimally so, um, during events like Festival in the Park, County Fair, the neighborhood is already pretty busy. The, uh, as far as impact on the neighborhood, I just have a really hard time seeing how it would have much of any impact. All I'm looking to build, there's already an existing ten by sixteen shed in the backyard, I'd like to add on a second ten by sixteen section to that, which would bring it up to, I believe it's about three hundred and twenty square feet total, um, and that would give me enough space to be able to, to operate this. Everything would be housed and stored and operated within that building, so there wouldn't be stuff, you know, there wouldn't be a pallet of cans shitting outside or anything like that. The brewing process itself is not a loud process, there's not, uh, there's very little noise generated, um, so that it shouldn't have much impact there. Any deliveries would be handled myself by the, by the truck that I drive, you know, I have, I have an expedition, so I would be delivering product to the, to the liquor stores and breweries myself, I'd be, um, most, most all of the equipment I would be picking up myself and bringing in, so there's not going to be, you know, a continual stream of, uh, you know, just, uh, shot distributor, uh, semi-loads or anything like that coming through. I'm looking at, at a small scale, small scale operation for two to five years, hopefully closer to the two-year side. The, like I said, there is already an existing ten by sixteen shed in the backyard, it's already on a cement slab, and so I'm just looking to add on to that, maintaining the appearance, maintaining the, uh, you know, blending it in with, with all of the existing structures. The, I am a teacher, I am used to making PowerPoints, but I never follow them anyway, so I apologize for jumping around a little bit. But the last couple of pages there, there are, uh, some aerial views with, uh, showing the, the shed, the house, the, the lot, with where I'd like to put the, uh, the addition onto the shed, so it makes sort of a, an L shape there. It doesn't make anything any closer to any of the other property lines, I'm looking, but that was the other conversation. Green space still leaves plenty, by, uh, by quick, quick math, it still leaves about eighty-three percent green space in the, in the lot. Although I guess it didn't account for the new sidewalk, so a little less than that, but. That is actually what I'm looking to do.
This one of the questions is, under section one fifty-four point zero eight four, home businesses. The purpose is that home business is any occupation for gain or support, and can be beneficial to the community in that they provide services to its residents, as well as supplement the income or personal satisfaction to the residents. However, a home business may result in a community that may have a negative impact upon the residential character of the community, and for this reason, a conditional use permit shall be required for all home businesses. So the question is, does this meet the definition of a home business, or is this something other than a home business?
In my initial email with a, I apologize that I can't remember his name, but another gentleman, uh, with the.
Brandon?
No, it was with, um, with the Economic Development.
Oh, Nicholas.
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 Um, he had suggested that it would be a home business, and that that was the route I should proceed.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that's correct, it's just what I was told by one person, so.
I guess my definition of a home business is you have interaction with clients that are coming and going versus, it doesn't sound like you're going to have people coming and going, you're the only one that's going to come and go.
That is the intention for the, for at least the vast majority of it.
And maybe I'm wrong in my definition, but.
You've got online businesses, I, I mean.
Right, yeah.
Your painting was a bit of a broad stroke in my eye. I don't disagree with you, but it's. It's new, I don't know, something kind of, I can't think of anybody in the last ten years that is, which is something in this calendar.
I'm trying to do something on the retail side of things, Scott, asking the questions of how you would handle parking if twenty people were to show up at your house.
Right, and the, which is part of why my initial thought would be contained to events where the neighborhood is already busy, Festival in the Park, County Fair, there's already cars and traffic everywhere. So it wouldn't, you know, another twenty cars wouldn't, wouldn't even be noticed, really.
That would be a tough sale for every other business here in town. I think there are some pretty strict parking requirements for businesses, and I know we tell a lot of businesses to those parking requirements when they've approached us saying, hey, I want to launch a new business.
Sure.
We have two things in our zone in definitions, we have home business and home occupation. And the definition of home occupation is any activity carried out for gain in a residence dwelling unit solely by the owner or residents of that unit, that is confined to the interior of that unit, so as to be undetectable from what normally is present within a residential dwelling, and does not qualify as a home business. So a home occupation does not require a conditional use permit, but a home business does.
And how do we differentiate between the two? What's the definition of a home business?
State license.
Well, and the home business is a home occupation or profession conducted within the dwelling unit of an existing accessory structure solely by the owner or residents of the dwelling, which is detectable from off the president premises, and is usually characterized by activity not normally present within a residential parcel. And that requires a home, that requires a conditional use permit. So I would say, like, when you put a sign out, or you have a hairdressing place in your, in your basement or something, and then you have people coming and going, I call that a home business. But we have people who sell Avon, that it's a home occupation, so they don't have a conditional use permit.
Yeah, just to make it even muddier, you're going to have state and federal people coming in to inspect this facility.
Right.
Yeah, the state will likely need, if not a conditional use permit, something from the city approving that, yes, you can run this manufacturing business in a residential neighborhood, that's, that's something the state will be looking for.
Would there also be a need to issue from the city an off-sale license?
Only if I'm selling directly to individuals. Uh, so only if I'm selling growers to people walking by, um, for selling to, um, to the liquor store or to a restaurant, that's a distributor's license, which I would give from the state. And so that.
I briefly read into that.
There's an example in here, home businesses may involve the storage of trade inventory incidental to the service equipment repair or assembly service requiring equipment other than customarily found in a dwelling or accessory structure. And that make it even muddier for you?
I think the trigger here is he needs, he'll need something from the city that says it's okay, either a building permit that says, yes, I can do this, or a conditional use permit that will satisfy the state from that standpoint.
And bear in mind, I spent less than an hour reading about it, it's a conditional use permit, and I appear that the state to be most interested in.
Yeah, and that is, when I, and I, I called and spoke to the, uh, the guy at the Gambling and Alcohol Enforcement that does most of the stuff with, with commercial breweries, and that was, that was, the words he used was conditional use permit, so that's what they're most accustomed to seeing. This doesn't necessarily mean that's the only route to go, but I would assume that is what raises the fewest red flags when they're looking at things and streamline their process.
Um, the way I read that is, uh, with the home occupation, that's all interior to the actual dwelling, the minute you're talking about an accessory structure, it's called, it's, uh, what the heck are these? The home business. And then, um, but just for your consideration, we do have another section talking about bulk storage, which includes grains of combustible, and, and so it depends on the interpretation, but it sure says that, um, now storage cheese can be combustible, so be located less than time to feed from residential district, except on those, you know, still properties containing residential homes, so I don't know if that's a consideration with this as well.
Putting all my cards on the table, I have Ruth and Mr. Stroh on the system, and I don't think that would apply, I think if there was a grain silo where he's got somebody coming in with bulk grains and filling it up, that becomes a little more relevant, um, green wag, grain elevator.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but, you know, general description.
You guys aren't making moonshine or anything like that.
No. That's a whole, that's a whole different life.
Well, I said you were, you were, said you were involved that.
Well.
Again, I'm sorry to disappoint you, disappoint you to somebody that might be able to help you, but that really doesn't count. There would be brewing beers, like, a little microphone, but, you know, if you're safe in that respect, then it's. You got to know what you're doing.
Yeah. Usually the worst thing you're going to make is a mess.
Right.
As a spectator, can I just ask a question? Would it, would it be helpful if he were to describe very briefly what the process is of making a batch of beer, and what's involved? That might be helpful in understanding what would be going on?
I know the process to it, but I don't.
I know.
Okay.
I've made some of my own.
Man, I'm the only one.
Yeah, to hop on the bandwagon.
It's always a question of the impact, for, for me, the impact on the neighborhood.
You wouldn't have a large amount of grain stored or anything like that, so that.
And it would all be contained within the, within the building. The only things that would be, the only potential things that would be, uh, external of the building, it wouldn't have to be, but in an ideal world, would be, would be a, uh, like a propane, uh, like one of the hundred-pound propane tanks, or the CO2 tank of the comfortable sizes, but those could be stored inside as well if that were an issue.
And you don't need a conditional use permit to currently only do one of those items, uh, or store that inside. But, I mean, people have those everywhere, so.
Yes.
Not a hundred-pound tank.
Are there any separation requirements, uh, from daycares, schools, churches?
Schools.
That sort of thing.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm asking a question.
I think if you were to try to sell it out of this home, you're going to run into those questions, and that's just outside of my scope of knowledge, I just don't think I would.
We do have requirements on those things, there's things that just don't belong in the residential neighborhood, and if you looked under your R one district, you'd find that you can't have, in our, in our liquor ordinance too, I think it can't be within a hundred feet of, or no, that's not much, three hundred feet of a school or public area.
So outside of the scope of this body, though, we can't tell you, I can't offer any direction on that license.
Right. So when you have limited sales, does that happen on this location?
Well, that, that was something that I would like to entertain, but would not be a deal breaker. You know, like I said, I would, I would be interested in being able to, um, you know, sell growers to people walking by during Festival in the Park, for example, because the neighborhood's already busy, but if that were, uh, to be seen as a noble item, that wouldn't, wouldn't ruin my day.
That would, that'd be a whole city council issue too, because we don't allow any other off-sale licenses except for our off-sale in town. So, right now, that wouldn't even be a possibility to get.
Well, that's interesting, because I had, in fairness, I had started asking questions about this about seven years ago, and then kids in life got. and then Kids in Life got busy and it fell by the wayside. And at that time, what the city had told me was that they cannot say that, like, can't, that... At the time, they, they seemed open to a off-sale license. So I'd asked specifically that question is, would you even allow other off-sale, uh, licenses because of the municipal, uh, store? And at the time, they had said that, "Yeah, we can't not allow that, we can't have a monopoly on it." Now, that may have changed in seven years, that's what they told me, that. Again, doesn't mean it hasn't changed or that I wasn't told wrong, that it's just...
To me, that would make sense, that you can't discriminate, you know, because you've got your own business. But we'd have to look at the statutes to determine that. Yeah, I, you know, I don't have any problem with it, with the caveat that we're not selling to people on the street.
Right.
I think it does fit the home occupation or home business, um, particularly if you're selling it to other commercial entities and not selling it to individuals. So, you know, I don't see a problem with this conditional use permit and all the... And the volume that you're talking about, uh, I'm not sure that there's gonna be a lot of order in the neighborhood.
On the scale of breweries?
Driving by, quarter months, alcohol plant, yeah. So I don't, I don't perceive that being a problem.
How does what you're per, uh, asking to produce compare to other people who do microbrewing, do microbrewing?
So if you were to compare it to what's in, say, the facilities in Rochester, uh, if you were to look at Life's Too Short or the Little Thistle, uh, breweries, they are both, I believe, using a seven-barrel brewing system, so that's, uh, whatever seven times thirty-one is, mental math is failing me, and this is about a barrel and a half. So on the, on the scale of, um, breweries, this is ministry.
I meant more of compared to somebody who just does it as a hobby.
Oh, gotcha, um, so...
How much are they making?
Sure, so a standard home brew batch is five gallons. Uh, and a typical batch off of the, the system I would be starting with is fifty. So it's about ten, you know...
Mr. Lewis Zalinski, sir, you have your thoughts? As I told the gentleman before you, I have no reason not to go through the process. So, I mean, a conditional use permit does carry with it a public form, so your neighbors will be notified, everybody has the opportunity to have a chair with the public.
Excellent, and I've spoken with most of them already, so. One question I did have, and this is probably something I could find online, but haven't yet, is is there a timeframe on a conditional use permit?
Do they... Twelve months.
Twelve, okay. And then it, does that need to be renewed, or does that...
We, there's only one that we have renewed here and it was, uh, was Marlo, who came in here with her nursery school group. And you had mentioned the timeframe, kind of looking at your, your back shed as kind of a pilot system for bigger endeavors. In, in the back of my head, we put a two-year condition on there, a three-year condition on there. I'm not saying that the conditional use permit comes to the end, but it require you, request, well, it require you to come back in here and give who's around the planning and zoning board a heads-up to, "Hey, I've abandoned the project, hey, I need a little more time, hey, I'm taking that next step."
So if the, so the conditional use permit is just to begin it or to maintain it? So if I, so if it's a twelve-month permit, if I'm still brewing beer there, I have to come back and give it another one?
No, you have twelve months to act on a conditional use, so.
Okay, so once I've started doing it, then it goes on for...
It goes on until you wanna make a change. The minute you make a change, then you have the whole review process.
But if I get the permit and then don't do anything for twelve months?
Then it's fired, then it expires.
Got it, excellent.
And what you were talking to is, there was one that had a, had a condition put on it.
That they come back in every X number of years.
Yeah, it was like ten years or whatever, right now.
Yeah, they were running a daycare out of a church and then they, and this is, this is before my time, this goes back...
Twenty years.
Twenty years. And something about, you know, what is the size and the scope of what you're doing right now. We're told that then change a lot.
The, the other provision in there is that, uh, a conditional use permit could be renewed for relocation if there's, uh, boxes upon receipt of three written complaints from property owners that's within fifty feet. So if...
So if the neighbors decide they don't like it?
Right.
So it's a very...
Or something like that. It can be renewed.
Excellent. Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Do we have any else we need to discuss tonight? If not, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you all.
Can I just put those notes in there and remember that next week we have the workshop on Thursday?
What is a growler? Growler is a sixty-four-ounce, typically glass, sometimes metal container. And what they'll do is they'll actually run online, like...